We are going to table the second item of new business, which is to recognize junior councilperson Frank Hastings. I thought that next month's meeting is the same night as Baccalaureate, but I was told that Frank would not be attending Baccalaureate, so he will be here for next month. So we will recognize him next month. Mayor and council would like to recognize Kevin Quinn for his promotion to captain of the Chester Fire Company. This has been going on for a couple council meetings now, and Kevin has not been available. Mrs. Gross, would you like to read his proclamation? And we'll have the mayor take it so. Yes.
Borough of Eddie Stone Resolution 3-2018. A resolution honoring Eddie Stone's own Kevin Quinn. Whereas council and the mayor of Eddie Stone Borough wish to recognize Kevin Quinn and his being named captain of Chester Fire Company. And whereas Kevin Quinn was a longtime resident of Eddie Stone Borough and graduates of Ridley High School. And whereas Kevin Quinn joined Eddie Stone Fire Company at the age of 16. And whereas he continues to serve our community as a driver and EMT. And whereas former fire chief fleeing 38 years, that Kevin Quinn, as a firefighter, has special abilities which he has proven over his years of service. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Borough of Eddie Stone, its mayor, council residents, employees, employers, officials wish to congratulate Kevin Quinn on his promotion to captain of Chester Fire Company and his many years of service. In witness thereof, undersigned heroes set this hands and affixed the seal of the local government unit this day, the 12th day of March 2018. Signing Karen Allen.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Gross, do you have any updates for the new storage team?
Yeah, we've got another member today, another person signed up. Mary Moyers, she lives on 11th Street. She's a homegrown Eddie Stone resident. And so that's really exciting, because we've now had seven, seven or eight. Yeah. So also, for those who don't know, we're getting a historical marker for Eddie Stone Wrightwell Factory. But we did the last year, we commemorated the 100th anniversary of the explosion. So we'll be getting that this year. The cabinet downstairs, the wood cabinet with the glass, we're going to fill that with recognition of all the people that, not all of them, but some of the people that passed, we have pictures of, and what type of factory it was. And we're going to encompass that cabinet and stuff like that. So when we get it done, when we get our plan, we will let you know.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Sigda, beautification, beautification day?
Yes, it'll be this Saturday, the 19th. We'll meet from the Borough Hall here from 9:00 to 12:00. We'll walk through the town cleaning up. Everything should be ready and in place. And hopefully, we have a good turnout, which I think we will.
Is the pattern ready to dive today?
No. Everyone's invited, children, adults.
Where do you show up?
Right here.
What time?
Nine and a half Saturday.
Hey Stan?
Thank you, we need the bring. Everything will be provided, gloves.
Gloves, trash bags, everything will be provided.
You ready?
No, we don't have one. We're hoping to get through. They said that thunderstorms will be late in the evening, hopefully they prove. Think we had enough rain.
We also have on Sunday, the 20th, we're doing a recycle event that's going to be held down in the parking lot by Joe Hughes Memorial Hall, by the new firehouse. So anybody who has any old papers they want to get rid of, or it's paper recycling. Not everything, just paper recycling. But that event?
Shredding.
Shredding event, yes. Which is going to be on Sunday from 9:00 to 12:00. At the fire, at the firehouse, yes. Okay, we have a fence permit application for 1313 East 11th Street. John, you have anything you want to add to the fence permit?
No, just the privacy fence.
Privacy fence. Okay, the person seems to have gotten letters from adjoining properties.
Yes.
Council, what's your pleasure?
Madam President, prior to taking action on the fence permit, procedurally, we should open the floor up to any public comment.
Any public comment for what, the fence permit?
Typically, we will have public comment before Borough takes any action. I believe we present the agenda to the public, and the public has an opportunity to review the agenda. And if they have any questions, they can ask those questions prior to us taking any action. I believe, Mr. Vicente, is that procedurally correct?
I want, I requested to have public comment at the end of the meeting, because I want to get the business finished first, which is acceptable.
Not according to law.
Mr. Vicente, as the Borough manager, is that the correct procedure?
Well, the idea is that if there's public comment, the complaint could be, if you don't have public comment, and we discussed this, I think, at some point in time, you know, that they didn't have an opportunity to comment on what's being voted on. However, having sat in many meetings across Delaware County, I can tell you that public comment appears all over the place and very often at the end of a meeting. I guess with the thought that correct, if somebody's comment changes Borough Council's mind, I guess corrective action could be taken. But, you know, there's no question that the public has the right to see the agenda and put their name on the board to discuss what's on the agenda.
Okay, with that being said, was council's pleasure? Would you like to do the public comment now? Or would you rather wait for the end of the meeting?
We've always done public comment before any action has been taken by this council. That has been the procedure for as long as I've sat on council.
Does it matter, Nate? Does it matter to you? Okay, we'll go to public comment then. Public forum, Mr. Glenn Wilson, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Let me remind you that you have three minutes. As per the rules.
What rules?
They're back there on the wall.
Is that a resolution?
Yes, it was.
When?
Uh, Winston. Ted, can you look at the date on that resolution back there?
2/11/13.
2/11/13.
What does it say? Does it say it's in a resolution? There was something voted on in Borough Council and approved?
Of course it was.
I don't think so.
I believe it was.
I'd like you to prove that.
Well, then sit down.
Okay, I'll sit down. If you're going to give me three minutes, that's an entirely arbitrary thing.
Well, you're not going to stand up here for five hours.
No, I don't want to stand up here.
Go ahead.
I don't have anything to say about anything that's come up for action yet, but I do know that according to the Sunshine Act, that there's supposed to be public comment before every vote. So if you have things scheduled farther down, when those things come up to vote, you know, I will ask to speak at that time. If you want me to say everything I have now, I'll do that.
You would speak now.
Okay. I'm not here to argue with anybody. I'm here to, because I have been told things by people sitting here, 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 here. And I'm trying to get my facts straight. So, you know, at the workshop meeting last week, I asked you if there's a reason why my membership on the commission, the planning commission could not be renewed. Your response was, "It is not council's pleasure that you serve." Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Then I asked about Mr. Stewart. You added him to the list, saying you didn't know if that him serving would be legal or not. Is my memory good there?
Yes.
Okay.
Sandy was going to look into it.
All right. Now, since it was council's pleasure, could the council members please raise their hands indicating who is for and who is against me continuing on the planning commission?
Mr. Wilson, I think I'd be most comfortable if we had that as part of an action later in the meeting.
Okay. And I'd also like to know when that vote was taken.
It was discussed prior to our workshop meeting last week.
An executive session?
It was not an executive session. We were all sitting here at the table. We were trying to get a planning committee together, first off.
Okay, so you voted on it.
Excuse me, your permission, your commission expired.
Is this public forum? Is this my turn to speak, or is it your turn to speak?
Well, if you're asking a question, I'm going to answer it.
I asked you if what I said was accurate. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So you're saying that the decision was made not in executive session, but before the council, before the workshop meeting?
Exactly. It was discussed, it wasn't a debate, it was discussed.
That's all right, that's all I'm asking. But when, so when you said to me that it was council's pleasure, you were speaking for the entire council.
Those who were present. Mr. Stewart was not present, I was not speaking for Mr. Stewart.
So who was present on that, at that meeting?
Kelly, Ms. Puckus, Mr. Stewart, and Ms. Gross. Or Mr. Sigda. Mr. Sigda.
Okay.
Which I believe is four people, so it was a forum.
When I spoke to Chief McChesky the other day, I understood, and Chief, you tell me whether this is accurate, please. I understood you to say that you had a plan to take the present Borough Hall down to the ground and build a new police station in its place, that you had applied for a grant for that purpose, and that you had engaged an architect to draw up plans. Is that true?
Yeah, I, on behalf of Borough Council, I apply for a RCAP grant. Our current grant will be, this blueprint, this footprint, will be remodeled, and the garage area is supposed to be reconstructed.
Okay, that's good. Was there an application fee with that grant?
There was.
And how was that paid? Was that out of police department funds that were budgeted for that?
No, that was a check issued to me upon.
By Borough Council?
Borough Council.
Okay. So this was an expenditure that was approved by Borough Council?
Correct.
And I'm probably going to, I would ask, I'm not going to take the time right now, but I would wonder when that was approved by council, when the vote was taken on that. But I'll just go ahead if you don't mind. Mr. Sigda?
I could actually tell you when that was. I believe that would have been at the February 22nd meeting, a special meeting that was held for the RCAP.
So that would be in the minutes, then?
Should be, yes.
Do we have the minutes, or are they prepared?
We have the minutes prepared.
Have they been presented to council as of yet? Will they be presented to council?
So it's May, and the February minutes?
I asked if they were presented. They are not on the agenda for a program.
All right, so the February minutes have not been presented to council and have not been approved. So we can't check on the minutes to see whether your recollection is accurate?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Sigda, when we spoke, you told me that Borough Council had purchased the house two doors down from here. And you told me that that was something that was a done deal.
I didn't say.
Yes, you did.
Now, I'll tell you something, Mr. Wilson. You beat my ear in for two hours and three quarters. You make no sense at all, and you're just looking for an argument. And that's what I'll enter right now. I'm done with you.
Okay. So you didn't say that a house was bought down here? Right? This, a house, a property two, one house away from us here?
I did not say they bought it. They were looking into it, that's all I said. So let me ask you this.
No, this is my, this is my time.
You want me, you know where I live.
I know where you live.
You kept bringing up all kinds of stuff, but you don't make sense on anything. For somebody that's only lived here about four or five years.
I've lived here 10 years.
Wow.
Yeah, 10 whole years. 10 years. You know, and I actually personally find it offensive that people who have lived here for 10 years aren't considered, are considered second-class citizens by you people.
It all depends what you do in this town. What have you done, other than stir the pot?
Well, I've been judge of elections. I've been doing this, I was doing this for three years. You know, I don't have to defend myself.
Outside of last week's meeting, when was the last meeting you attended, Mr. Wilson?
Oh, you know that? It's been a while since I've been here.
Well, if you wouldn't be coming to meetings, maybe you would be more enlightened as to what was transpiring.
Okay. Well, then, Mr. Sigda and I have a difference of opinion on what we discussed that day. I'll go to Councilman Stewart. You told me that there was a special meeting where the $1.3 million grant for revitalizing the village area was approved with a six-to-zero vote, and that a $500 check and the Borough Engineers Report was all that was needed to make that grant go forward.
That is not necessarily a correct statement on the discussion we had. I did tell you that we met in a special meeting on, I believe it was the 26th of February 2018, that we did discuss whether or not we would be, the council would entertain moving forward with the revitalization grant for the Eddie Stone Village area. And then, yes, that did pass six to zero, that the Borough Council is interested in moving forward to the next round for funding consideration.
Did you have an expectation that that was going to be going forward?
It should have gone forward, yes.
I'm going to skip the last thing I have here. And if you want to bring that up, Bill, you can, because you know what it is. If I'm getting bad information, I apologize. If it turns out that I'm not getting bad information, I wouldn't apologize. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Is someone else for public forum?
Yes, do I have to sign a paper?
Come on up, state your name and your address.
Martin Tattasur. I just want to thank the council for doing, I voted for every one of his. And I just want to say, you are not professional politicians. You do a community service. For somebody to come up here and accuse or obsess every week, it's, it doesn't do the community any good. I appreciate everything you do. Of course, you're going to make mistakes. You're not professional politicians. You're doing a community service. You don't get paid squat. You take your own time. And for somebody to come up here and antagonize every week, and that, if I was sitting up there, that's intimidating. People have cell phones nowadays. If something's important, like that has been in the past, and someone asks you to film something, that would be fine, because we need stuff recorded. But not an intimidation device like you're doing. You're an obsessed, I don't know what you are, but, look, these people are trying to do a good job. It's a community service. And if you want to do something, run for office, or go to Harrisburg where, this is a small community. Things here, they just get by. We're trying to run a town.
Are you addressing council?
I'm addressing you, because you've been antagonizing for a long time, and I don't usually get involved. Because my wife's on council, and I stay out of it, because she has her own, she's a very intelligent woman, and doesn't like to be intimidated. And I'm sure no one else does either. And I just wanted to tell you, I do like you, but you're obsessed. Go to Harrisburg and sit, and see if you can do that in Harrisburg, where you'll do some good with your little petty things.
Ask your lawyer if it's legal.
No, I asked my wife, and she says, "It's a public meeting, he's allowed to do that." But, look, here, look. People have cell phones. If you find something important, go like this. Everybody else does in all America, all over the world. They don't sit there with that tripod and people put, that's intimidating. And I'm saying that as a Borough resident for life. If you don't, yeah, 10 years, yes, you do deserve your opinion. But you're obsessed with your opinion every damn minute of the day. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Tattasur.
And I do appreciate everything you people are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tattasur. That was an attack on me, that wasn't a comment to the Borough.
He was thanking us for what we do.
He was thanking us for doing what we do.
I said what was on my mind, sir, just like you do. But that's probably the last time I'll do it. I've got my opinion and my feelings out. I don't do it every minute of the day. I have a life.
Okay, next, under new business, fence permit application for 1313 East 11th Street.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the permits for the fence at 1313 East 11th Street.
Motion to debate and second it? Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Jennifer Hoff, is Jennifer Hoff in the room?
Yeah.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Jennifer Hoff is with Hoff Communications, who handles the website. And she was asked to come, because I think the council has some questions.
Ready when you are.
Okay.
I think one of my questions is, when you first started this, who was your contact person?
I'll build Stewart.
And he asked you to do what?
Design a website. So in 2014, the contract included designing a website, training staff, a staff member to update the website, and occasionally helping with content.
Who was the staff member you helped?
I don't remember her name. She was right up there.
Okay, so you got her up to speed on how to do the?
Some of it, yeah, some of it.
Tina Torres.
Yeah, I know.
Was that the name?
Yes, Tina, yeah. But she could, from the information you've given her, she could have started?
She was, yeah, she was given a manual. And we're always available. We do a lot of municipal websites. And customer service is one of our things that I think we're well.
But you felt she was pretty comfortable doing this?
Um, I think that for someone that doesn't do it on a regular basis, it's a little bit more challenging than it is for us. But she was as trained as anyone else. It's something that you have to do on a regular basis.
Now, do you contact, contact at all during the month, save the information we have?
Yeah, I regularly would email Bill and ask if there was content to go up, et cetera.
And Mrs. Stewart contacted you, and you told you we did have information?
On occasion, he would. The last, I looked a couple minutes ago, the last update was in April of 2017. I send pretty regular emails to my clients. And at one point, we were talking every other week to develop content.
Is there anything, when was the latest time something was added on there?
April 2017.
And what was that, do you remember?
No. I just looked at it, but I don't remember.
Yeah, that's what it's like. But nothing about the bingo, related auxiliary?
No.
Nothing about parades and camp?
No, no.
None of the information like that?
No. Alls I could do is ask, I can't go and.
Someone has to, right, so he has to give you the information.
Right, and even if I had the information with Burrows that I do, like I can't just post what I think is important.
Right, you have to check the first.
Somebody's got to tell me.
Absolutely, let's give the information.
Or at least say, "We're doing this." Google it and put it up. You know, it goes, different places work differently.
I understand, just thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Hoff, can you just remind me, do we have a contract with you, or did we? And how long was it?
We had a contract to develop the site. After that, it's just billable by the hour. You use it, you pay, you don't, you don't. There are regular fees for your domains, I believe they're around six of them. That's GoDaddy's fee, I supply the receipt, plus $5 handling fee.
And speaking of that, they go on the.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
And you, just ballpark, any idea, what do you charge an hour?
75 an hour, I bill in 15-minute increments. I've not seen an update go over 15 minutes. Yeah, we're pretty good at what we do, and it's pretty quick.
Does anyone else have any other questions for Ms. Hoff?
I'm happy to train another person, if you feel that, you know, another person should be trained.
How long would training take?
So typically, we have a user's guide that we've done, probably hasn't changed that much. We would look at it. And then, I would do it in about an hour or two, one-hour sessions, because I think two hours is too long. And then, they have free reign to call my staff and say, "Oh, you know, I'm stuck." You know, and, you know, we've been doing this for 25 years, so, you know, we don't get stuck very often, thankfully. Thankfully. Your site right now is in good shape, besides not having content. It's a WordPress site, it's been regularly updated without expense.
But no information was given to you, but Mr. Stewart about parades, holiday events?
Actually not today, because there are people on council who.
Right, that information wasn't given to me. That's exactly, in January, I started calling Mr. Stewart again and saying, "Hey, you know, elections, elections," because that's, you know, I know that. But, you know, that's, you know, it could have been my responsibility to. Yeah, but it could be updated.
Right, okay.
I doubt you have less than an hour's worth of updating to get it rolling again.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that.
No problem.
Ms. Hoff, do you recall when we launched the website?
I looked it up, 2014, around March, April, yeah.
When we launched the website?
Yeah, yeah.
And just to, you know, I don't believe you were on council at the time that we did the proposals for the website, but just to give you a piece of mind, Councilwoman Gross, is that I believe we solicited proposals from about a half a dozen web designers. We did do an extensive interview process, which each, with each of those designers, you know, every person who wanted to provide service to the Borough came in, gave a presentation in front of council. The way that we set the proposals up wasn't necessarily for best price. We didn't want the cheapest person. We wanted best value. And I believe that we've gotten the best value out of Hoff Communications thus far. When the website was launched, it was actually submitted in front of the Pennsylvania State Association of Burrows, and we were recognized with a third-place award. So obviously, the website, you know, was impressive enough to the folks that were reviewing it. You know, I feel as if, you know, for lack of a better term, that you want to dump on me for failure to provide content. And, you know, the website is a joint venture among all members of council. There was a point in time, both in 2015 and 2016, where finances got a little tight, we were all tightening the belt, and unfortunately, Hoff Communications was one of those things that we didn't have the excess money to spend on updating the website. We got into situations where Jennifer was several months behind on being paid for invoices. And just most recently, it was probably about a two-and-a-half-month process in order for us to just renew the domain names. We were down to the midnight hour the day before GoDaddy was supposed to expire. Ms. Hoff made several attempts to communicate to me. I took her emails, I forwarded them to both Council President Reeves, I forwarded them to the administrative staff, asking them to reach out to contact Ms. Hoff, to provide some updated contact information. And, you know, to her testament, she took it upon herself to put the renewal fee on her company credit card, as opposed to waiting for the Borough.
Excuse me, I believe what you said, was President Stewart, was, "We asked if we could put the charge for GoDaddy, if the Borough could pay for that, and you said yes."
Yes, the Borough could have paid for it.
Exactly, and then I remember an email from Mr. Vicente, asking you for the passwords. And at that point.
I don't have the passwords. Ms. Hoff had the passwords.
And that's what you said, and at that time, Mr. Vicente, am I wrong on this? That's when we found out that Ms. Hoff had put the, you put it on your credit card?
Yeah, it was two days before they were due to expire, and I don't play with that sort of stuff.
Right, so I mean, the attempt was made by Mr. Vicente to pay the GoDaddy account.
I disagree with that. I disagree with that whole order, Lee, is that I sent multiple emails out to both you and to Mr. Vicente, and I asked, "Will someone please contact Jennifer Hoff to take care of the renewal of the domain names?" Multiple emails, which I can produce through, from the first email that I received from Jennifer.
I knew that he was going to pay the GoDaddy account.
And all you have to do is just to call Jennifer and say, "Jennifer, I'm willing to pay the GoDaddy account." How do I do that? And she can do it on your behalf, once you give the credit card information. Because that's how we did it in 2014, when we set the domain names up, is we gave Jennifer the credit card information for the Borough. And that's how it was set up. Unfortunately, credit cards expire, and there was a bad expiration date. Unfortunately, credit cards expire, and there was a bad expiration date, and we may have changed bank accounts. I don't know. However, the effort was made.
The credit card was compromised.
Well, the credit card was compromised, but, you know, I made the effort for almost a two-month period of time for someone to make a simple phone call to our web designer to provide her information so she could update the domain name.
I don't know that it was a two-month, it was a one-period.
Jennifer, when did you send the first email to me?
I wouldn't know, but you start getting?
It's immaterial.
Yeah, you start getting them around three months ahead. You know, the truth is, I'm interested in doing your website. It's not an expensive thing, you know, we can, you know, I can provide you an estimate. I'm really good at this, you know, and it's a shame to have a client at risk over really things that I'm not responsible for.
Well, we have residents complaining that, you know, the website's not up to date, and council members complaining as well. I mean, it's pretty embarrassing when, you know, you have people calling and saying, oh, no offense, but, you know, Ms. Thompson's still on the website. How long have you been not been a councilwoman?
But that information has to be sent to me, and the borough understood that. I can't just look at the election and say, you know, hey, I saw this election took place, let me put it on their site, like?
If the website is important to Borough Council, my recommendation to you, Council President Reeves, is to set up either a committee or assign an individual who would be responsible to report on a monthly basis to the borough what they've done to keep the website up to date.
And someone in the borough could be trained, right? It's a fully functional site, it's using WordPress, like, there's nothing not compliant about it, there's a mobile version, like, everything's there. We don't have to throw the baby out with the bathwater. You know, it's all there. We just need to update it, you know, so something happens, and we can just make it better. It can be updated by, you know, Wednesday, Thursday. Like, it's not a big deal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're a business. We need a nomination for zoning hearing board position. We have CD property application pending.
Madam President, I'd like to make a nomination for Edward Buckus to be on the zoning hearing board.
Motion made and seconded for Mr. Buckus, Mr. Ed Buckus.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
What is the CD property application pending?
There's an application pending for the CD bar. There's a zoning board hearing for, the property is, it's in the process of being sold, and the person purchasing it would like to make it into an apartment. John, I'm sure you can elaborate more on that?
Yeah, he'd like to make the bar into either one or two units, depending on whether his design professional can put two units in or one. It's based on that, and other repairs that need to be done. But he don't want to purchase the property unless it gets granted the right to make it a residential law.
However, he could purchase the property and go through the zoning process. He have to purchase?
Yes, he could.
But it's not guaranteed.
What does the zoning change that's required in order to take a commercial property and turn it into a residential?
Well, they're gonna have to get his design professional to make plans and submit them, if once approved. I mean, you're changing use groups. You're going from a B to, or an A, to a R2.
Ms. Pessenti, I'm seeing, shaking of the head, no, is it not?
Building use groups versus zoning groups?
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, he has to apply, you know?
He has to, if he is going to make the, you have to go through the zoning ordinance to verify whether or not that's allowable in that particular zone. Yeah.
Yes.
Senator Curran, I believe, is, am I correct in saying that it does not allow that use of an apartment on a commercial property? Residential living?
It is zoned right now, I believe, neighborhood business.
Neighborhood business.
It has an apartment in it now.
Upstairs.
But there's also, I believe there's wording that says once it's some of the businesses, or, I don't know exact wording on everything, but I know there's something, if you end the business, it reverts back to residential property. But I don't know the exact word.
The business is dissolved, so it reverts back? Is that correct, Lisa?
I have to verify in the ordinance, typically, if it's a neighborhood commercial, and there is no commercial property in there for a period. Some municipalities, it's one year. Some municipalities, it's eighteen months. We've had all of the economic downturn. It went to two years because the real estate market went. It reverts to the initial zoning. So if it were neighborhood commercial, it remained neighborhood. If it was rezoned to neighborhood commercial, and then that period of time lapsed, it would then go to residential. So it depends exactly how your ordinance reads.
Lisa, we have this adorable picture of that store at Memorial Day, and it was a market, from the 40s or 50s. So I reckon it just had a market, you know, on top of that.
It would just be what your actual ordinance looks, what was there, what uses are allowed. As Mr. Stewart, if apartments are allowed and not used?
There's two upstairs.
And that makes sense, because you have a storefront downstairs, and apartments upstairs, and it's typically a neighborhood commercial.
Okay.
So we have to look at the ordinance.
Is that a decision the council could make to reset the property, or is that a council, is that a decision needs to go to county for approval?
Both. You could actually rezone that property, but it would have to go to Delaware County Planning Department to review.
So basically, the sale, the sale of the property could not be dependent upon the decision of the borough's zoning hearing board. That sale probably should be more dependent on the decision that would come from the county after the Borough Council's zoning hearing board makes a recommendation.
I believe Sandy could probably answer the procedure, if you actually, that zoning change would come from the applicant as a request, and we have to go through Borough Council, it would have to be reviewed by Delaware County Planning Department. It would go to Delaware County Planning Commission for a recommendation, and then at that point, council, you have a legal description of the property in the ordinance to change that zoning.
Or the owner, the owner could sell the property as is, and then the new owner could worry about the zoning, correct?
That's up to the owner.
That's up to the owner, okay.
Can you run that procedure through one more time, just so that I can?
Which one?
The process for changing the zoning.
Typically, the property owner requests that the municipality, that they would like to see a change in zoning in this area. Sometimes the municipality does it as a whole. At that point, you would have, you would have a hearing in front of council. That particular request would have to go to the county. So upon the county 247 form, there's a place to check off that there's zoning change. There's a change in zoning. Delaware County Planning Department would take a look at it, make a recommendation to Delaware County Planning Commission, who would then approve it, and then send it back to you. And I do believe it has to go to the law library for recording a zoning change.
I don't know how to answer to that, but there's some?
So the zoning?
I know that, one of my other municipalities is doing zoning changes right now, and the solicitor there said a copy of that also had to go to the Delaware County Law Library. I don't know that, that's why I'm an engineer and not a county.
At what point in time does it go in front of the zoning hearing board if the council knows?
It would, if it's a zoning change.
If it's a zoning change, council, council would give their, would give their approval for it to be reviewed by Delaware County Planning.
It would not make the approval until such time as the counties would need it.
So we would refer it to the county. We make the decision whether we want to refer it to the county or not. If council stands and says, we don't want the zoning change, it'll never go to the county.
I don't believe so. I think that has to be your call.
So basically, council would have no objection to the zoning change. If it go to the county, the county would review and approve.
The county would make their decision. I don't know if they would review and approve it, or say, it's spot zoning. They would make that recommendation.
But it's not just as simple as a hearing in front of the borough zoning hearing board. It's not that simple. It's a process that needs to be followed.
It's not like they're changing zoning. If they're coming with an application to do something else, and I don't know what that is, but are they asking for a special exception? Are they asking for variance? I don't know what we're talking about here. Right, then it goes to the zoning hearing board.
My understanding is they're looking to go from a neighborhood business to a residential.
I think we need to review that. How about if I call John tomorrow, and we'll sit down and go through it, and we'll see what they're doing, and we can come up with a game plan. Is that okay?
Right, is that John?
That's fine.
Yes, there was a motion made and seconded for, to add Mr. Ed Buckus on to the zoning hearing board, because there's a vacant position. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes had it. Nominations for the planning commission seats.
Madam President, I was not in attendance at the workshop meeting held last week. I was not part of any of the discussions about Mr. Wilson, you know, no longer serving at the pleasure of council. He was a member previously of the planning commission, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Glenn Wilson to the planning commission.
Motion made. Any seconds? No seconds.
With the fact that there's no seconds, Mr. Wilson, I believe that you have the answer to your question that you asked at the public conference.
Do we have any more, any other nominations for the zoning board hearing? For the zoning board?
I'd like to make a motion for Robert Gleeb, David Bennett Senior, and Mike Knowles.
Mike Knowles is already out.
Mike Knowles was approved last month, I believe, but that's okay. I mean, you read his name. Motion made, seconded.
This is for who now?
This is for Robert Gleeb, David Bennett, and Mike Knowles was actually done last month. So it will be for Mike, for, what's that, for planning commission seats. It would be Robert Gleeb and David Bennett. Have a motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes had it.
Madam President, before you move forward with?
That would be for a four-year term.
Before you move forward with the planning commission, there's multiple projects that the borough is looking at. As everyone is aware, there's been a submission for permits from Penn Terminals for the construction of a new bulkhead, which is looking at expanding the capacity of the port that we have down along the river. There's a, from what I understand, a developer that's interested down at the property at 291 in Seville Avenue, where the Sitco Station is currently located, that the current building there is scheduled for potential demolition and reconstruction with a Dunkin' Donuts that includes a drive-through. We also are looking at multiple grants that have been submitted through the Commonwealth. There's three RCAP grants that I'm aware of. The RCAP for the revitalization of the village area. We have the RCAP that was recently submitted for the Eddie Stone Public Safety and Administration Building, and upon review of the round one list, there's also an RCAP that has been recently submitted by a company called Eddie Stone Riverfront LLC. And upon just a very quick narrative of what they're looking at, they're looking to build a 350,000-foot, square-foot food-grade warehouse right at the river property. So although in years past, the planning commission has been somewhat silent, it looks as if the planning commission is going to be active. And what I would request is, if it was the pleasure of the president, I would like to serve as the council's liaison to the planning commission to be looking at these projects as they move forward.
Counsel, it's your pleasure.
I'd make a motion to? Yeah, I'd make a motion to appoint Mike Knowles.
You do know that as liaison, if anything came to a vote of counsel, it would have to future.
Minor point is that the ordinance?
Excuse me, and this will be working in a group.
Madam President, just to be clear, as liaison, he would not have to recuse himself, but he could not take part in any vote as would liaison. The problem would be if you, if Mr. Stewart was on the commission and had a vote, and then there was an appeal to council, then you would be in a position where you would have to recuse yourself. But as liaison, he's simply there to?
oversee.
oversee and report back to council what's going on, essentially, and back and forth, just exactly what liaison means.
And you would have to report to all of council.
Correct.
Borough ordinance? Just asking, the borough ordinance calls for five people on the planning commission board.
But we weren't, we weren't done yet. We weren't completing it.
Okay, I thought I heard you take a vote.
Were there any more nominations? Ms. Buckish?
John Fettrow, Ron Sampson, and Amy Riley.
Okay, John Fettrow.
12:20 mark.
John Fettrow, Amy Riley was, Ron Sampson.
That would give you a total of six.
Yes.
Amy would be an alternate.
Do we need an alternate on the planning commission?
Yes. You have five, five seats.
Five and three would be a quorum.
Three is a quorum, and you have one alternate. Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
Who's the alternate?
Amy Riley. Ms. Buckish made a motion.
Yeah, she was seconded.
Mr. Sigis seconded. Okay, there's a motion made, seconded, to also add John Fettrow, Ronald Sampson, and Amy Riley to the planning commission. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes had it.
Did you complete the vote for me to be the liaison? I don't believe we completed the vote for this.
Oh, okay.
Sandy made the motion.
There was a motion, there was a motion made to approve Mr. Stewart as the liaison, Vice President Stewart as the liaison for the planning commission, and it was seconded by Mr. Patterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes had it. Okay, ordinance 2018-660, which is the fire company insurance reimbursement. Sandy, could you?
The, Madam President, just, so you know, I have with me the notice in the Daily Times, so it was advertised. It's been, the full ordinance has been available here at Borough Hall, as per the advertisement and notice, and also available at the Daily Times, which they request. Do you have a clean copy, or does yours? I'm gonna have to send you the copy, sorry.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-660, fire company insurance reimbursement.
Motion made, seconded, for that ordinance, 2018-660, for the fire company insurance reimbursement.
Madam President, can I ask a question prior to you taking action? Chief Walsh. The, I just wanted to confirm prior to us taking action on this ordinance that the fire company has added? company has had an opportunity to review, ordinance 2018-660, which is the insurance reimbursement, and the company is in agreement with the way that the council is looking to move forward.
I'm just getting a copy of this now. Just the, the insurance reimbursement for cost of service, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, yes, it's what you, it's what you asked for.
We're definitely in agreement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes added. Mr. Pasanti, could you please read the treasurer's report?
I apologize, Madam President, before leaving the new business, do you want to deal with this resolution that you requested? Oh, yes, right, yes. Just by way of explanation, the tax collector here in Eddie Stone had requested that there be a resolution raising the amount charged, and it's really to title companies and mortgage companies when they need certifications, because there's more work involved, sometimes there's multiple years of research involved. And from the tax collector, I was given some pretty good research that were pretty low. We charge $10 for that service. Most, most other boroughs and townships in the county charge more than that. What I've done is establish a flat fee. Now, I don't know if that's the way council wants to go. Some townships charge a fee per year, like if you ask for three years' worth of cert, or it turns out to be three years' worth of certifications, you know, they charge $15 per year, and then the flat fee on top of it. All that I was asked to do was establish a new flat fee from $10 to $30. So I apologize, I don't have it written, but I have it scribbled here in front of me because I left it on my printer. So if it's council's pleasure, I can read it into the record and you can decide what you want to do with it at this point.
Yes, please.
For our Eddie Stone, our County, Pennsylvania resolution, whereas the Eddie Stone tax collector is routinely requested to provide both tax certifications to certify that taxes are paid and also to provide lien certification for title companies and mortgage companies, and at times is asked to rush these services. And whereas providing such services can involve multiple years of research and can also be time-consuming to research and provide such information, now therefore it is resolved that the Eddie Stone Borough Council raises the fee to be collected by the tax collector for providing tax certification and for lien certification, and establishes a flat fee of $30 for any of the above certifications. These services charges, these service charges shall take effect immediately. Be it further resolved, that this resolution shall be reported in the official minutes of the Eddie Stone Borough, and that a copy of this resolution shall be available upon request to anyone who applies for either a tax certification or a duplicate tax bill adopted, et cetera, et cetera, and signatures. Now that, I don't know if that's where you want to go with this, but that was what my research turned up, and that was the request made, that we raise that flat fee.
Okay, you heard the resolution for the tax collector, increasing the fee for the certifications, read by our solicitor, Ms. Leporey. It's council's pleasure.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution read by the borough solicitor, from $10 to $30.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes added. Okay, Mr. Pasanti.
Madam President, I make one more motion.
Sure.
I make a motion to approve the summer hours, starting after this meeting, and dress down code for.
Summer regular.
Summer regular.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion made, seconded, to go to our summer hours, our summer schedule, which would be no workshop meetings for June, July, August, and September. However, we may need one for June, which is a lot. And what, what happens is, just because we are eliminating the workshop meetings in the summer, if we need to meet, we certainly will. It's not etched in stone that we're not going to have it. And also dress down, so we don't have to dress all up in the heat. We have a motion by Mr. Patterson, and seconded by Mr. Sigga. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes added. Thank you. Treasurer's report, Mr. Pasanti.
The general fund balance of the Borough Health and Charant Bank, ending April 2018, $1,262,092. That's the sewer fund balance, Health and Beneficial Bank, same time period, is $383,756.65. Liquid fuels fund, Health and Beneficial Bank, at the same time, same time period, is at $131,282,900. The borough's funds collectively, as of the last day of April 2018, are $1,777,132.65.
You heard the treasurer's report, it's read by Mr. Pasanti. It's your pleasure.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve treasurer's report, read by Mr. Pasanti, and make part of affirmative minutes.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Just a question prior to taking action, actually, just a comment, is Mr. Pasanti, if you could pass it along to your brother, my thanks for including the sewer and the liquid fuel in the treasurer's report, who requests it at any time. And I am an aye if you want to move forward.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes added. Report, enforcement report.
Inspection report for April 2018, residential work permits, 17 were issued, zeros, stop work orders citations were issued, 33 inspections were performed, total residential work permit fees were $1,879.20. Commercial work permits, there were 10 issued, zero stop work orders citations issued, number of inspection performed, two. Amount of permit fees received, $19,979.51. Contractors license, 10, for a total of $750. CO inspection performed, 22. CO fees received, $1,450. Residential operating license, there were 28 inspections, two licenses, for a total of $900. The health license report, there were five licenses issued for $250. Total number of inspections performed were 33, number of stop work orders, zero. Total number of permits issued, 27. Total number of licenses issued, 10. Total received, fees received, were $24,908.71.
You heard the code enforcement report, it's read by Mr. Lyman, it's your pleasure.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the code enforcement report. It was presented by John Lyman.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes added. We back up one minute for cash disbursements and receipts.
Sure. I make a motion, Madam President, I make a motion that cash disbursements and receipts and journal, all bills be paid, all monies deposited.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
I have a question, please. Mr. Pasanti, I'll just take your word, is that the, we spoke last month about the recycling grant, you had advised if we had received the $151,000 and change for reimbursement for the collection vehicle. I don't believe that was in the last month's cash receipts and disbursements journal, but I believe it is, should be in this one, correct? The deposit of that money's. And then if you could just confirm that that grant has been closed out completely?
The grant's completed, and I will just have to look through the money.
Money's been received.
Yeah. I'll check on the next. But they, the deposit, that's what you want to know.
No, not just that it was deposited last month, and it's included in the treasurer's report of 1.3 million in the general fund.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam President.
Sure. You heard the cash disbursements and receipts journal. It's your pleasure. I made the motion, I made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
You're good then?
Yes.
Okay, eyes added. Police report, Chief Pacheski.
Police report for April 2018, 432 calls of service for an airline, 1558, 143 traffic citations for 421, eight accidents for 35, 16 deaths for 66, 179 parking citations for 263, and 37 criminal arrests for a total of 96. Also, the council wrote a letter of resignation for a part-time officer, Lawrence McGlocklin. Said, "Please, dear Chief Pacheski, please accept this letter as formal notification of resigning from the position of police officer based in Borough Police Department. I leave my position to accept the position of Harrison County Police Department. I want to thank you for your opportunities for professional and personal development. Harrison Police Department has bribed me during my tenure with the department. I enjoy working with you and my fellow brothers. Please hesitate to contact me if I can be of any assistance after my departure. Sincerely, Lawrence McGlocklin." Mr. McGlocklin's a part-time officer, and he accepted a full-time position with half the police department.
You heard the police report, it's read by Chief Pacheski.
Madam President, I would like to approve the treasurer's report.
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Eyes added. Also, can I have a motion to accept Mr. McGlocklin's, to officially accept Mr. McGlocklin's resignation?
I'll make that motion, Madam President, to accept his resignation and to wish him luck. Making part of the minutes and wish him luck, sorry, it's in, thank you.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor to accept Mr. McGlocklin's resignation?
Aye.
Eyes added. Fire report, Mr. Walsh. Chief.
I've been elected to read it.
Okay.
Is Chief Walsh still here, or did he have to step out? Okay.
Mr. Bruce?
April 2018, fire EMS report. There were three automatic fire alarms, three building fires, one gas leak inside, one gas leak outside, two training, two wires, one assist Chester, two assist with a, one cover-up. Total alarm, 16. Five day, 11 night. Total members responding, 116, average of seven persons per call. Fire EMS, total calls for service, 39. Day shift, 18 calls, 10 transports, one QRS, four cancels, two refusals, and one scratch. Evening shift, 13 calls, nine transports, two QRS, two refusals, zero tranches. Overnight shift, eight calls, a tranches.
You heard the fire report, it's read by Mr. Bruce. It's your pleasure.
Madam President, I have a few questions before we take action.
Sure.
Chief Walsh, I noticed there was a couple QRS calls that were, at what point in time do you dispatch out a QRS call? Why would you do a QRS as opposed to doing an ambulance?
The ambulance's out of service for a couple days, is getting a warning, repair made, and we ran the certified QRS in his place to start a patient here.
Okay. Well, you still had two EMTs on duty at the time, and the two EMTs, would you go with the, with the QRS?
Yes.
Okay, and then we would have to call in assistance for some other, the transport. How long was the ambulance out of service?
Two days. As they had to go off to Westchester Shedding, that's the only way I can accommodate a week.
Okay.
It's a drop-off night, and then a full day's work, and you pick up the next day in the morning.
All right. Is that the protocol that you guys follow? Is it, and I'm just looking at, there's times that, you know, I understand there's two EMS technicians that are required to be on, you know, the calls, in the event that someone doesn't show up. Is, is, we're kind of going to go to a QRS type of situation out to respond?
There's only one one we send a QRS, that's all, one EMT is required to be on the shift.
Okay, all right. And then you guys are running ideally a 24-hour day, seven-day, week 365 operation, in a perfect world. Borough, our paid staff, is that a Monday through Saturday paid staff?
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week. When do we begin paying the seventh, seventh day?
This year.
This, this year? And what was the reason for beginning the seventh day?
President funding.
Because of? Firehouse funding? So, so in years past, it used to be the borough would pay Monday through Saturday, correct?
Yeah.
Two shifts, 16 hours a day. And then in January, you were given authorization to start a seventh day?
I submitted the budget proposal from last year, that was seven days a week, seven days a week, a little earlier.
So you submitted it for?
This year.
Our budget?
Yeah.
Madam President, wasn't, I don't believe it was reflected in our budget that way. The calculations that I've done only show six days a week.
I believe you're correct, because we took out the fire truck. The fire, the fire truck was in there. We figured it won't be ready, available until the end of this year.
Correct.
And then Joe bumped it, Joe bumped it up.
Joe bumped.
The money that he took out for the fire truck, he put in part of the salaries for.
I, I, I recall the discussion being around $45,000, $50,000 is what we added to the EMT line item, which, which was to pay the second shift. But, but when I do the calculations of what we have budgeted, what we have budgeted is basically to have a second shift, a first and second shift, Monday through Saturday. However, now we're, we're paying, the borough's paying the seventh day, which, which is going to put us into a budget deficit at the end of the year, because we did not allow that line item to reflect the seventh day.
Well, fortunately, Mr. Pasanti is not here this evening. He had a prior commitment, but we can certainly discuss it with Mr. Pasanti.
So my question is, who, who made the decision to go to the seventh day? Was this a decision that was made at the committee level? Or was this a decision that was, you know, that Andy just thought, "Hey, I submitted in the budget, I'm going seven days."
At the committee level.
So it was at a committee level, that, so the committee basically gave the fire company and the EMTs permission to go to the seventh day.
Because we didn't have anybody fulfill that, the shifts.
Did the committee make any calculations of how much that was going to cost the borough before they made the decision?
Right.
They were struggling.
They were struggling. We had no coverage.
You were struggling for, for getting volunteers, correct? So the committee basically said, "Hey, well, we'll, we'll, we'll put paid slots out, and we'll pay folks to work that seventh day," correct?
Well, what we were trying to do was make sure our community was covered. If there was an emergency, we'd get someone on it, instead of waiting for someone else to come down the plate. We were looking out for our community, make sure they were safe.
However, you made a decision to spend borough money without council approval, is that?
I don't know. I mean, whatever this before. It's always repetitive, so.
Recurrent of in what sense?
You broke this up before, yes.
Yeah, but I never got an answer of who directed the seventh day. I've, I've, I've asked multiple times, and I've, and I've asked multiple, multiple ways. I'm finally getting an answer that says that the fire committee met with the firehouse and the, and the EMTs, and the, and the, and the fire committee said, "You have authorization to belong paid staff for seven days." Am I correct?
They're not 24/7, I mean, every.
No.
No.
Two shifts, 16 hours. So, so 16 hours for a Sunday, times 52 Sundays, you, you, basically, the committee made a decision to spend about $25,000 in wages. And then on top of that, you've got the premium for workers' compensation, and then you have on top of that, employer pay taxes. So, so when it's all said and done, the committee made a decision to spend over $30,000 without council approval.
Okay, what's your point, Bill?
The point is, is that if we're going to make the decision. The point is, is that if we're going to make decisions that cost the taxpayers money, and I'm not saying it's the wrong decision, but you need to bring it in front of council that says, yes, we're going to...
I know. Like a building?
Yeah.
That should have been brought before council?
Let's bring the building up in front of council. Let's bring the building up in front of, in front of the public. How much money did we spend?
On what?
To purchase the original light household. How much money was spent?
None.
None, okay, so there was no money.
But it was also, it was also an item that wasn't discussed before council.
I respectfully disagree.
No, all right.
I respectfully, I respectfully disagree.
Stan, you can't, you weren't even around. Beth?
Beth wasn't around.
Beth was around. In 20, 2016, April of 2016, she certainly was.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's bring the elephant in the room out.
We'll bring the elephant in the room out.
On the 20, on the 23rd of December 2016, I spearhead, on the, on the 23rd of December 2016, I at the time of being borough council president, spearheaded an effort to submit a revitalization of the Eddie Stone Village to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for funding consideration.
Oh, back up. I have something here from Alliance Dockery that says William Stewart, uh, dated April 25th, 2016. Dear Mr. Stewart, you and I spoke in the recent past about the potential purchase of the subject property by the Eddie, by the Borough of Eddie Stone. You indicated during that conversation that you would be forwarding an email to me that confirms the interest of Eddie Stone Borough in the purchase or other acceptable use of this property. To date, I am, I have heard nothing further from you, nor have I received any email. As I explained when we did speak, the Manzies are most interested in marketing this property in a timely fashion. If Eddie Stone is indeed interested in exploring viable options for the purchase and/or use of this property, we are most certainly open to negotiations and discussions towards that end. Conversely, if, for whatever reason, the position of the borough has changed since you and I have spoken, I need to know, I need to know so that we can, we can place the property on the market and attempt to look, to locate and secure a suitable buyer. In any event, I look forward to hearing from, from you at your earliest opportunity.
Yeah, my email back to that gentleman was, and please read it in its entirety. And I will point out to you that at no point in time did the borough spend one penny, one penny towards the purchase or lease of that particular property, not one penny, but please read the email response.
Email response. Well, I have an email to Mr. Hallie. That's the one you're referencing?
Mr. Hallie was the gentleman who wrote the letter on behalf of Lion Dockery LLC. So Michael J. Hallie Esquire wrote a letter on behalf of Lion Dockery LLC regarding the property at 1212 East Second Street, which is the original light household.
And this was addressed to, it was to Bill, to Mr. Hallie, copied to myself and Joe Passendi.
Correct.
Dear Mr. Hallie, the borough is in receipt of your correspondence dated April 25th, 2016 regarding the property located at 1212 East Second Street, Eddie Stone, Pennsylvania. As discussed, Eddie Stone Borough is in the planning process to rehabilitate slash expand our Borough Hall located at 1300 East 12th Street. We have identified your client's property as a potential site to relocate our administrative...
Potential sites.
Administrative and police staff during the construction process. While our rebuild may be a few years out, the borough is still interested in discussing the purchase and/or use options for this property. Built in 1880, the building is an important part of our history, serving as our first town hall and a community center for our founding residents. At this time, the borough would like to arrange for the property to be appraised and to begin discussion about a lease purchase option for the building and lot. We appreciate the patience shown to date by the Manzi family. Please let me know if I should arrange the appraisal inspection through you or Mr. Manzi.
Correct.
Now, at any time, when did you bring, first off, purchasing the property to borough? Because I said to you...
It says we have identified your client's property, but at this point, I have no knowledge of this.
Chief Pacheski.
My, excuse me, excuse me, my reply to this email was, you need to bring this up in each session. I thought the last discussion on this was that we couldn't afford it. It was going to cost too much money in heating, et cetera. Send the letter, but I do think council needs to know what's going on. Just my opinion.
I do remember saying that it would be too expensive and we're...
Chief Pacheski.
Yes, sir.
In 2016, at any point in time, did you go down to the property at 1212 East Second Street to look through that property to see if it would be suitable for a, either a permanent relocation of the police station or as a temporary site for the police station to be housed until such time as a new borough building could be constructed?
Uh, we did, yeah, take a tour of the building.
Mr. Mayor, during 2016, were you down at the building to take a tour?
Yes.
Ms. Reeves, were you, were you taking a tour of the building? And, and the purpose of that tour was for what reason?
To see how beautiful the inside of the building was. That was redone with the mast and whatnot. We were invited to go, to go view the building, which is what we did.
Okay, how much money has the Borough of Eddie Stone taxpayers spent towards the purchase or the lease of 1212 East Second Street? How much money has the taxpayers paid towards the lease or potential purchase of that property?
Again, zero.
Zero, okay.
Did we pay to give a brief?
No, we have paid nothing.
What's that? I don't know what that, what, what that has to do with firehouse.
Oh, because we, we approved for the first and second shift to be paid on Sunday, so that we have coverage for the residents.
So my, my point is, is that if we're going to spend the taxpayers' money, then we need to make sure that we have approval for that expenditure here at the borough table. You know, I'm getting criticized for undertaking a, a grant opportunity, for asking someone to give us money.
It was a grant opportunity on a project that this council was not at the time interested in.
Okay, let me...
What you're neglecting to tell is it's a matching grant.
It is, wait a minute, wait a minute, at what point in time did I ask borough council to spend any money on this? In 2016?
You didn't. You did it all on your own. You, you did the project on your own. You knew that the project that we had at hand was this Borough Hall. We talked about once in need.
Although the meeting minutes, although the meeting minutes, although the meeting minutes have not been presented in front of council, a special meeting was held on the 26th of February 2018. At that meeting, borough council was briefed by myself. Was it the 22nd?
Twenty-second, yes.
All right, let the record reflect the correction of the date. On the 22nd. Was it Thursday? Pretty sure it was the 26th, which was a Monday. But the date is, irregardless of the date, in February of 2018, borough council had a special meeting to specifically discuss the fact that we were selected for round one. Round one was just, hey, we, we, we like your project, would you like to move forward? Yes.
It's essential.
And, and borough council voted, what was the vote for moving forward with this project? Did we vote, no, we're not interested in moving forward with the revitalization of the village? Or did we vote, yes, we are interested in moving forward with the revitalization of the village? Was the answer no, or was the answer yes, and please wait for the fire signal to stop so that everybody can hear your answer?
It was, it was a line item that showed up on the R-CAP report for the state.
And what was the...
Along, along with the line item that Chief Pacheski worked his butt off.
I disagree. Two separate, two separate line items.
They were, they are two separate.
Two separate line items.
And we said to go have a group.
And we said what? What did we say?
We didn't want our chances of losing votes.
So we, what was the decision of council? What was the decision of council regarding the request for funding for the revitalization of the Eddie Stone Village area? What did council vote on the 26th of February 2018? Did council vote, yes, move forward, or did council vote, no? Your hands were tied. Your hands were not tied.
It was already a line item.
Your hands are not tied, Councilwoman Gross.
Right, we were...
We didn't want to see losing two grants. We wanted, we wanted chances.
Absolutely.
At least one project.
Who submitted? I submitted it. I submitted it on the 23rd of December 2016.
No, no, it was council.
That's, that's bull crap. That's bull crap.
No, it was not.
That's bull crap. Every member of council had an opportunity to go down there, review that property. You know, every member of council ran on the same platform. And I'll show you literature that we sent out to the residents of Eddie Stone that said, neighborhood revitalization is an important thing to this council and we want to, we want to revitalize the neighborhood. And what better neighborhood to revitalize than the Village Area?
We talked about purchasing homes that would be at a bare minimum to the taxpayers.
That's included in the grant. It's included in the grant.
We talked about once in need. What we need is a new Borough Hall. It would need to have historical property, but we need a new Borough Hall.
Then on the 26th of December, I mean, the 26th of February 2018, Councilwoman Gross, why did you vote yes to move forward with the revitalization of the Eddie Stone Village? You voted yes.
Yes, we all voted yes. It was recommended that it would not hinder.
Recommended by who? Borough council's hands were not tied. Borough council could have said, no, thank you, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We don't want your money.
First of all, here's your narrative. I just said why we voted yes. We voted yes on both projects.
Correct.
So that we would not lose any...
Actually, I, actually, I don't recall us talking about the municipal building. I believe the meeting was specifically about the, the village. I don't believe we voted yes to the municipal building.
Yeah, I do. Because that was the reason.
Because I remember the once in need thing, yes.
Well, we went forward, we voted yes for both projects.
I only believe, I only believe we voted on both projects.
We're moving on.
Let's move on.
Once in need. Moving on.
So is that grant dead or not?
That grant is not dead.
Okay.
Okay, Lisa, engineers report.
What a segue, thanks.
Sorry. Hold on, hold on, let's... Oh, we didn't vote on the fire report?
We got through one.
No, we got it. I have a motion to accept the fire report by Mr. Gross. Motion made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it. Okay, Ms. Katania, you have the floor.
Um, we do have a copy of my report, quite a few things this evening. Most, we referred to Liberty Electric to try to get the location report welcome sign. I was hoping we'd have an answer this week. The, the plant manager was away. We need to get a contact with them, which should, should, we should, we should have been acceptable, we're going to have property. Major George completed the restoration work, the punch list that we had. Of course, he says we'll do a final inspection of that and that would close out the Santeras Wharf project for June 12th, 2016. The playground upgrade, as we spoke at workshop, and our company was the low bid, seventy-three thousand dollars. On April the 10th, I sent a letter to county council requesting the additional funds to, to complete that project as the bid, uh, the funding allocation was at fifty thousand dollars. I understand from myself that it is part of the, I put, the plan that has just been put out for the 30-day comment period, and we should be hearing about that with the comment periods.
Oh.
Uh, I also am speaking to Phil, he is suggesting that we do a conditional award, that we be conditioned upon getting the additional funds to complete the project and we award that to our company for a bid of seventy-three thousand. What that does is we do not, will not have to refit the project because it would be over the ninety days from, um, which would cause us to have to go out for a bid again. So that, I don't believe is on the agenda tonight as an action item, but it should be. So I'm going to ask council for, for a vote on that. Whether you want to do it now or you want to do it when my report's completed, we do need to, to get that on the order tonight. The...
I'll make a motion right now to approve what the engineer is trying to make up on the panel.
Motion made seconded, all in favor? All right. Any opposed?
I, I think there, the, our transcriber is getting the proper information about who the contractor is and what the award amounts.
To our company?
Playground. This is the Community Development Block Grant 2014. We will not complete anything as far as a contract until such time, or sending an award letter until such time as, you know, we have that additional funding. I've sent to council several different proposals for swings, replacement arts. June and I went out and checked the site and verified what could be taken out, could, could or could not be removed as part of trying to save that, that property. And, um, we can wait to, where that, where that goes as far as funding. The county has awarded two hundred fifty thousand dollars, or as you say, it says set aside two hundred fifty thousand dollars for pothole assistance. Some municipalities have received a letter from the county saying, this is your allocation in that two hundred fifty thousand dollar pot. However, Tim has not seen it as of yet, but he's going to verify that tomorrow. I am going to ask council to do a resolution this evening for that pothole assistance. That again is not on the agenda, so I would ask that the council consider that.
Motion for a resolution for pothole assistance?
I can, I can word it for you if you'd like.
Yeah, please.
To authorize the submission of, of resolution, whatever the number is, for pothole assistance program to county council.
I make a motion to approve the engineer's recommendation for the pothole, uh, to assistance to Delaware County.
Motion made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it.
It's alluded to earlier that Penn Terminals has a bulkhead project that is in land development. I spoke to Mike Wagner, who was the consultant for Penn Terminals concerning a 30-day extension to the June meeting for action on that project. And they're agreeable to that. There's no action that needs to be taken, but I've asked them to put that in writing so they have something for record. The energy audit, all of the utility bills from 2017 went to the Energy Conservation Company. So I would assume that we'd be looking at something probably not till your September workshop. They like to present to council at a workshop meeting, it's less formal, they'll be able to ask a lot more questions. So we should be seeing something that we can see.
Like I said, that's just, you know, if we need it, they want to present it, say, in July or whatever, just let us know and we can, to be...
Yeah, well, that, that's at no cost. That audit that's being done and the study that's being done, they'll come to all of the municipal facilities and give recommendations for work to be done. We're also, well, the original reason was for streetlights to revert those to LEDs and then any of the other energy conservation measures that they would say. And at that point, council would determine whether or not they would want to move forward. But all of that, including the report, mapping of all of the streetlights in the borough, is at no cost to the borough. And I believe, um, we received, we received a, a plan for Duncan Dino nights and there's some, um, confusion with that. I believe it has to go through land... I believe it has to go through land development. Mr. Presetti is telling me that it's already going to the county. They don't have any of that information. Once I get that, and verify whether or not that's, is in process. That's all I have, unless anyone has it.
We have anyone in Seville with a signature?
Ms. Katania?
When you were talking about the swings and for the special needs children, was it worth something?
There is a tot swing, because the tot swing is broken from what I understand. So Jean asked me to take a look at replacements for the tot swing. One of the tot swings is actually an accessible tot swing, or accessible swing. So it's, tots can use it, but any, any child that has special needs can also use it. So they call it an accessible. That, that chair is $837.
Right.
There's others that we talked about. The tot swing itself is $200.
Right, right, right.
So at this point, I think we were going to, I don't know who's ordering that swing. But we talked about at workshop, just as a little, do you want me to order it?
Yeah, I thought we were going to have you order it.
Okay.
And then if we can get the handicap swing as part of the project with the grant money. Remember, we were going to see if we had enough, that we would order the other swing at that point. You should be, yeah.
Doesn't matter if you have a child.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We do have, the park is not any accessible at this point, because we have issues with, with the mulch.
Right.
So once, this, this project-
The rubber thing?
This project that we've conditionally awarded, or you have conditionally awarded, includes all of the safety surface matting, the 12 inches of matting throughout the entire playground.
Right.
So that's something that, that I know typically is in your budget to replace every year, that you won't have to do, because all of that's being done. And it's being done at a 12-inch thickness, so that the fall height is correct.
You said there's something under the wood chips, some kind of rubber barrier?
There's a, there's a surface mat that you can buy, that you actually put into the ground, you tie it into the ground, and put a couple inches of mulch over it, and it avoids those divots that you see under the swings. And at the, at the, typically at the end of the siding boards.
Okay. Anyone have any, anyone else have any other questions for Lisa? Ms. Katania?
Thank you.
Start the engineers' report, would your pleasure?
I would like to make a motion to approve the engineer's report submitted by Ms. Katania. May I have your permit?
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes ayes. Upcoming public meetings, our next council meeting will be June 11th. There will be no workshop meeting for June, unless, unless need be. Roundtable, high school graduation, June 12th. 12th is high school graduation. Mr. Frank, would you please make sure that you're here on June 11th?
Got it.
Roundtable discussion, Chief Pacheski.
I'd like to congratulate the women's essay winners. The young ladies did well, that improved your whole control of large group, did very well.
Anything else? Chief?
About what?
Done? Mayor?
Yeah, I agree with the chief, the kids stood up, one act of job, one we must say. I got them good.
Mr. Sagan?
We love hearing from the children time to time in here. I have a couple of things. One is, I'd like to thank Nick Coco, who's here, and the Highway Department, and also Borough Council, for giving us the opportunity to take out the bushes out front. Without this group effort, nothing is done. It is getting done, it just takes time. Anything help I can get up, you know, Nick Patlott, I said, you can help us, absolutely. Any ideas, things that we can do together, I'm all for it. And don't forget Saturday, we'll be cleaning up the town, it's beautification day. So if you're available, you love the hives, and any children that you can bring with you. But that's all I have.
Councilwoman Gross?
I hope Alda Monta nice Mother's Day, and congratulations early for all the new Ridley High School graduates. I hope they're yours in college and staff, and I hope everybody has a nice week.
Councilwoman Patterson?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate the young ladies staff, one Mother's Day essay. And also to the chief, if you could send a thank you to Officer McLeary for his services, we appreciate it. Again, Saturday, we're having the community cleanup day. All are welcome, the participate, adults, children, and everybody. Most importantly right now, I'd like to apologize for the behavior of council tonight. I think we did you injustice this evening. And I ask for your forgiveness. That's all I have, thank you.
Councilwoman Buckus?
I just want to congratulate Leila and Nina as well. I think being that young in front of a large crowd like this is pretty great to be able to come up here and speak. So they did a great job, and for their mom and their grandma. The, this past Tuesday, we had our last craft story hour for the kids. We're going to have summer camp coming up, so we'll get a new list of events out for the fall after camp is over. And then Memorial Day's coming up, so May 27th, parade, fireworks, moon bounces, you know, the whole night yard. So looking forward to that.
Councilwoman Patterson?
Just wanted to thank the two young ladies who came up and read their essays. They did do a really good job. And back Mr. Dorazio from the school for supporting the essay contest. That's about it.
That's it. Mr. President Stitt?
I'll start off with the, when the rotation comes around the table, and I have the opportunity to lead this council and to share with this audience during, during the prayer, prior to the pledge of allegiance, one of the things that I always put in the prayer is, and the ability to work together in harmony, even when there's honest disagreement. And I believe that the discussion that we had this evening, even though there's disagreement amongst the member of table, amongst the member of councils, we do need to continue to move together. There's, work together and move this borough forward. There's a lot of projects that are on the table, and I am passionate about this borough.
I see something? We are all on the same page with you, Bill. We're all on the same page with you. We want you to be part of the solution, not part of the problem.
I ask a question about the fire company. You slapped down a letter from Lionstocker LLC dated April 25th, 2016, that has absolutely nothing to do with the fire company.
Just show, Bill, that none of us are perfect, okay? You did things, you did things out of the realm without counsel, though.
That's not true. That is absolutely not true, and I 100% disagree with that statement.
It's over and done with, we're not going to-
It's over and done with, but I absolutely-
Let's move forward.
I absolutely disagree with the, I moved forward with something that council wasn't aware of.
Absolutely get it, that's it. But let's move forward. Moving forward, let's move forward, forget it. It's over and done with.
Let's move forward. Signs?
How fair are these residents?
Can I get an update on where we're at with move and stop signs over to the Department of Holes? Is the streetlight contract completely over? Have we finished reanchoring signs?
We were reanchoring. Everything was reanchored, and we asked Jean to be there to verify if they were reanchored. And last I spoke to Jean, he was supposed to be on vacation, but was at the playground fixing equipment. And he said he had a lot of things to do, because at that same time, I also asked him to get started on the Green Region Grant, because we don't want to lose that money. But he's going to be trying to get everything done. We got to start on the, on the curb at this point, where they're removing some of the signs.
We want to remove-
For that very reason.
We want to remove signs that say, no parking here at the corner, and paint curbs, correct?
We are.
Okay. We use a denser.
Yes. And other signs that they would not be-
Fix the crosswalks.
Yeah. So that they are actually the correct size, width, thickness of lines.
I want to thank Jennifer Hoff for coming out this evening from Hoff Communications. You know, we do have a very viable website. It's a website that, you know, we as a borough should be proud of. Do I agree that it needs to be updated? Yes. She, she said something that struck a nerve with me, is that she felt as if she has a client at risk. And I would like to at least send Ms. Hoff home this evening with some assurances that, you know, are we going to continue to use the services of Hoff Communications? Council, or President Reeves, are you going to form a committee, or make an assignment of a member of council that says, you're responsible for updating the website? Or are we going to go a different direction? I think that we owe that to Ms. Hoff, so that she understands when she leaves here this evening, which way the borough is going to go.
I think we need to sit down as council, see what the council's pleasure is.
So at this point in time, we're not going to do anything with the website? You're not looking to make any updates? We're not going to be adding any new stories? We're not going to be updating the calendar?
Is that what she said?
President Reeves just said that we need to sit down as a council and decide how we're going to move forward.
It's council's pleasure. How do you want it? It's council's pleasure. Stan, what would you like to do? Would you like to continue to use Ms. Hoff for the website? Or prefer to seek, I'm doing it all for council, to seek?
I'm with the sources out there, you know, like just one person. My kids go on the website and didn't see any of us. You know, years are on there, I'm not on there. It's not updated, when will it be updated?
That's the question that I'm asking this evening.
Right, and that's why she was-
And then, you know, Joe, Joe takes all the pictures here.
Right.
Where's all the pictures?
I have, they can email to me, I do have them, and I can't forward them to her.
I mean, there's certain things, I mean, I'm not picking on Mrs. Hoff any views. I mean, I want to see what's-
It is in no way, shape, or form, the condition of our website is in no way, shape, or form a reflection of Ms. Hoff's performance. Because Ms. Hoff can only put on the website what we asked her to put on the website. And what I'm saying is in 2016, 2017, funding was tight, there was no extra money, and we elected to not do anything additional with the website. If it's council's pleasure to put it, my personal feeling, I think we should be updating the website on a weekly basis. If not, if not more often, then I agree with that.
Ms. Hoff, would you come in and show Tina how to access the website?
Sure. Would you like me to, I'll do it free of charge. I'll do an hour's worth of updates, so we can get the Memorial Day parade up, and we can get the new officers of Borough Council up, and, and make it good by Wednesday or Thursday of this week. If you just send me the information, I'll get it up, no charge. And we can start again, I can come in and arrange for training, and, and we'll be all set.
Councilwoman Buckus, do you like to take the lead on it? You're pretty savvy, you're savvy with the little pecky. So have you worked with Ms. Buckus?
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Anything, anything else, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Wilson, I appreciate the vigor that you have in your civic duty. You, you have passion, I give you a lot of credit that, you know, you, you take a lot of bullets sometimes in wanting to hold this council body accountable. I, I remember when I ran for election, I learned a lot of what my responsibilities would be as a councilperson from discussions with you. You certainly do your homework. I am sorry to hear that council did not reappoint you to the planning commission. And to just, let me say it one last time. The submittal of the grant on the 23rd of December 2016 for an R cap for revitalization of the Eddystone Village area cost the borough taxpayers zero dollars. That's all I have to say, Council, or President Reeves.
Mr. Frank, do you have anything?
I'd like to congratulate the two recipients of the Mother's Day contest. I'd also like to thank Ms. Patterson and Mr. Dorazio for doing that every year. My little sister was lucky enough to win it last year, and she was genuinely excited for her essay this year, when it came around time, so she couldn't wait. I think that's really cool, I think that's like important, the good value that kids should have, so. Also, if the website will be updated and everything on Thursday, I think that the beautification day should be on there, we shattered it.
Well, thank you, Mr.?
Thank you.
Mr. Hastings? We'll see you next month, right? Be your last meeting?
That's right.
We'll be graduating. Are you going to college?
Yes, sir. I'll be going to Delaware County Community College for two years, and then I'm going to transfer. I would like to go to Temple, and do Temple Law, but I'm going to major in political science. That's my, that's my stint here at the, on the junior councilman, that's geared me in that direction. So I thank you guys a lot, actually.
So you can still come to meetings and then, you know?
Oh, yeah. I'll be up here one day, so.
I hope so. I hope so. Looking forward. Ms. Claire, did you have something you want to say?
I just wanted to ask about the workshop, no workshop. And my question had been, how are residents to know if there is a workshop meeting or not? And it sounds like if the website's going to be updated, then that would be someplace we could look.
In the summertime, we always, we've done it, as long as I've been on council, moved to just one meeting in the summertime. Families go away for weekends, and, you know, it's just got to be a little too much, try to skip a few meetings. If need be, though, I mean, we do make them, you know, accessible. So it's just something we've been doing for years upon years. I hope everyone had a happy Mother's Day. And congratulations to the two little girls, Nina and Leila. And Despo, thank you very much for, you've been doing this for, how many years? You sat up here? Twenty, count, twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-six. And you've done this every year. Kudos to you. Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to have this meeting adjourned.